Okay, ladies and gentlemen. A belated good evening to you all. And welcome to tonight's City Council meeting and Committee of the Whole meeting. For the folks tuning in tonight, watching from afar, we have joining us virtually the lion's share of the City Council. We have Alderman Swanson joining us here at the dais. Traditionally speaking, we were interested in using an alternative platform to broadcast and engage our citizenry in this new-fangled way. However, because of technical difficulties, we are asking anyone who is joining us remotely by tuning in and wishes to either ask a question or make a statement under New Business tonight, to please email your comments to publiccomments@genova-il.us. If you are unable to do so, you can certainly email us a phone number and we'll be happy to call you from the dais here so you can share your comments.
We will not be reading written comments, but we will be posting those for official record of this meeting. And we will acknowledge receipt of that commentary as well.
So without any further ado, again, my apologies for the technical issues. We will begin this meeting and this meeting is called to order. I kindly ask our city administrator, Stephanie Dawkins, to please take the roll call.
Bruno?
Bruno, here.
Burkhardt? Ruby?
Ruby, here.
Caven?
Caven, here.
Kilburg?
Kilburg, here.
Casarog?
Casarog, here.
Miladra?
Miladra, here.
Marks?
Marks, here.
McGowan?
McGowan, here.
Swanson?
Here.
Ladies and gentlemen, just for what it's worth, Alderman Burkhardt did contact me earlier, and I believe Alderman Bruno as well regarding a work conflict she had that came up at the last minute, so she will not be joining us this evening, in case you are wondering. And at this time, we begin our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. I would like to ask our special guest and new colleague, Mira Johnson, to please lead us in the pledge.
All right. I don't have a flag at my house, but I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mira. And folks, that is a great segue into the next agenda item. Under Item 3, Public Hearings, Special Items and Presentations, we have the pleasure of introducing all of you to our new Human Resources Generalist, Mira Johnson. Mira, welcome. How are you?
Thank you. I'm good.
Good. Now, you and I have had a chance to visit with one another a couple times, and you were kind enough to provide some little highlights regarding your life and your background and your experience, so I'm going to share these with the council and the community as well. You all sit.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Brace yourself, I made these up. Grew up in the Caribbean. Now, is it Caribbean or Caribbean?
Natives say Caribbean.
Natives say Caribbean. There we go. Your dad is a United Methodist minister who follows the itinerant system, which is move wherever you are sent. That's pretty cool. Is dad still in the Caribbean or Caribbean, excuse me?
Nope, he lives on Martha's Vineyard.
Oh, well, life is good.
Yeah, he has a church on Martha's Vineyard.
Wow, that's pretty neat. That's where our next strategic plan will be. Mira ran track and field at the University of Pittsburgh on a full athletic scholarship. Now, when you and I first met, I believe you told me that... Was it the 4x100 or was it... What's your discipline?
I ran the 400.
You ran the 400.
Which is once around the track.
Once, yeah, that's... Thank you for clarifying that. Once... Now, you're pretty humble, Mira, because you're quite the standout athlete. And you're a full ride to University of Pittsburgh. You were also on several national teams, is that correct?
Yeah, I was All-American three or four times at the University of Pittsburgh, so I enjoyed my time there.
I bet you did. Now, what did you study when you were at the University of Pittsburgh?
I got a bachelor's degree in political science.
Wow.
But I realized that I couldn't make much money on a bachelor's degree in political science, so I ended up going to Northern Illinois University.
Right.
And got a master's degree in public administration.
That is pretty cool. And you've worked for the cities of Northfield, Montgomery, Kane, and Kendall County, and then you... This is your writing, I believe, took eight years off to stay at home and be a mom.
Yes.
Wow.
Yeah, I did. I enjoyed that, too.
Which is more difficult, the 400 meters or being a mom?
Depends on who you ask.
We'll ask the kids when we meet them. So you have a 12-year-old and an 8-year-old?
Yes, I do.
Wow. And how's everything going during COVID with the little ones?
We're part of School District 308, so we're entirely remote.
Ah, okay.
So they do want to go back to school, however...
Wow.
No. I'm sure they know more than we do about logging onto meetings and muting ourselves and cameras, et cetera.
Oh, exactly. Room reader, all that good stuff. Now, here's what I find interesting. You love volunteering with the Rotary Club and your church, Trinity Methodist in Yorkville.
Hmm.
And you and I met probably 10 years ago when I spoke to the Rotary Club. Remember that?
Yes, you did. You spoke on fundraising.
Exactly. That was a long time ago.
I remember that.
Wow. And you get to hang out here at City Hall in the vast and elegant Human Resources Division.
Yes, which I've been enjoying. It's very comprehensive, so it's A to Z sources. So I've been enjoying it. It's challenging.
Mira, what didn't you know about Geneva that you do now that you find pleasantly surprising?
Well, on my second day, I want to say second day or second week here, I found out what the speed limit was on Route 31.
You're kidding. You know this is being broadcast around the world right now, right? Do you remember the officer's name who reminded you?
Officer Duncan reminded me that speed limit is 30.
He's one of our taller officers, too. Tony Duncan, right?
Yes.
Yeah, oh my.
Yes, yes. I was so embarrassed.
Well, imagine this video living forever. You'll be embarrassed for a long time. Wow.
I'm sure the entire City Hall and the entire city employees would be embarrassed by the time I parked my car.
That's funny. And was it true that you were going 75 in the 30 zone? I'd take that as a no?
I think my car would have been in the homeowner's yard if I was going to drive in a 30, but yeah.
So what else should we know about you, Mira? Because we're delighted to have you onboard. We're thrilled that you chose Geneva. We're honored to be your colleague. Anything else we should know about you before I turn it over to the floor for the council to ask any questions or...
No, I mean, I love... I still live in Montgomery and I'm very involved in that community. I love... I'm on like the Comprehensive Plan Commission Board. I... Because of my political science degree, I'm doing local politician data analysis, so like pulling, you know, pulling Democrat, Republican information and getting referendums passed and doing things like that in my personal time. I'm kind of nerdy like that, so doing data analysis on how many votes you need, how many doors to knock on.
So a strategist.
I like that kind of stuff. And I love all sports, so I watch football all day on a Sunday, and I pretty much watch the playoffs for basketball, baseball, hockey, any of those sports, so I'm pretty intent into that. I also like hiking, so I've hiked all the forest preserves in Kendall County, and so now that Kane County, my goal is to hike all the forest preserves in Kane County.
No kidding.
Call them my hobbies.
Well, since here, then you also love genealogy.
Oh, yeah, I do. I do, because I grew up in the Caribbean. And my dad is actually from Belize.
Oh, wow.
So I did the ancestry test, and so I'm pretty, you know, a mix of different things. I'm 16% Irish, I'm 4% French, 73% West African, and so I have like the will of my great-great-great-grandfather from 1795 in Belize.
Wow.
Yeah, he was a slave owner, but still, and I did get to trace my Irish ancestors. So I was telling Ben the other day that they were called Sharon, so I was like, maybe I'm related to Ed Sheeran.
Yeah, there you go. Now, you and I were talking as well about this whole thing that we call football, and your son likes to play football.
He plays soccer.
Because we were talking about the whole football thing, right?
Yeah.
But you love to watch football, but you're not a big fan of younger kids playing football?
Yeah, yeah, the jury's still out on that with CPE. I just... There are other sports you can play that are not as much of a contact sport, although I love watching football, so am I a hypocrite? I don't know.
I don't know. Did you know that our city attorney was an all-state ping pong player?
Really?
No, no, no. Yeah, just look at him.
Well, I love all sports, so I would watch ping pong.
It's called table tennis at the Olympics, right? Kinders?
Yes.
Yes, sir. Questions or comments from the City Council for our new HR Generalist, Mira Johnson? It's a fantastic background, extraordinary experience. We're delighted to have you.
Just welcome aboard.
Thank you.
And we're sorry you couldn't be here with us live, Mira, but thank you.
I know, I wanted to be there in person, and Stephanie kind of gave me the option, but I thought with the rates that they are now, just better to be safe than sorry. I've done my fair share of contact tracing since I've started at the city, and so I don't have to contact trace myself.
Excellent. Well, thank you again, and welcome aboard.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Bye.
Item 4, ladies and gentlemen, amendments to the agenda. Are there any amendments this evening from any... Recommended, rather, by any member of the council, either remotely or present? Item 5 is the omnibus agenda. All items marked with an asterisk are considered to be routine and can be considered and acted upon with one motion. Is there such a motion?
So moved.
Alderman Swanson beats you out. Alderman Marks gets the second. Whenever Ms. Dawkins is ready, we will take the roll call.
Bruno?
Bruno, aye.
Ruby?
Ruby, aye.
Caven?
Caven, aye.
Kilburg?
Kilburg, aye.
Casarog?
Casarog, aye.
Miladra?
Miladra, aye.
Marks?
Marks, aye.
McGowan?
McGowan, aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Item 5, the omnibus agenda passes with a vote of nine in favor, zero against, and one absent. We jump down two, ladies and gentlemen. Item number nine, and that is 9A, to consider acceptance of the fiscal year 21, Second Quarter Goals Status Report. Is there a motion?
Bruno, so moved.
Alderman Bruno makes the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Swanson? That's why you came in, isn't it? We have a motion and a second? Any questions or comments for Administrator Dawkins or Assistant City Administrator Ben? Hearing none? Seeing none? Sensing none? Roll call vote, please.
Ruby?
Ruby, aye.
Caven, aye.
Kilburg?
Kilburg, aye.
Casarog?
Casarog, aye.
Miladra?
Miladra, aye.
Marks?
Marks, aye.
McGowan?
McGowan, aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bruno?
Bruno, aye.
Item 9A has been adopted with a vote of nine affirmative votes, zero nay votes, and one absent. Item 10, folks, is municipal bills for payment. We kindly ask our city administrator, Ms. Dawkins, to read the bills in their aggregate for our consideration.
Bills for payment total $3,925,938.
Mayor, I move that we... This is Bruno. Moves that we approve and pay the bills as read. The individual items that add up to that amount can be found in tonight's City Council packet on the city website.
Alderman Bruno makes a motion to accept the bills as presented, which are also available on the city's website and in the council members' packets. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by, I believe that was Alderman McGowan. Any questions or comments regarding the bills as presented? Ms. Dawkins, roll call, please.
Caven?
Caven, aye.
Kilburg?
Kilburg, aye.
Casarog?
Casarog, aye.
Miladra?
Miladra, aye.
Marks?
Marks, aye.
McGowan?
McGowan, aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bruno?
Bruno, aye.
Ruby?
Ruby, aye.
Item 10, municipal bills for payments has been adopted with a vote of nine in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and one absent. Folks, we skip down two. Check this out. Item 13, New Business and Public Comments. I'm going to ask our city administrator to check the email to see if anyone has written in, and there's been no record of any emails received.
Yep.
So anyone from the council, any new business tonight? Alderman McGowan?
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
I don't know if it's good to bring this up under New Business in the City Council meeting or the Cow meeting to follow, but I contacted everyone, either one or two at the town over the weekend, with information about whether or not we should discuss at an upcoming Cow meeting having a chicken ordinance in the city of Geneva. And as I explained to everyone on the council and, of course, Mayor Burns, I'm doing this on behalf of a variety of residents who contacted me over the last few months, asking why the city of Geneva does not currently have a chicken ordinance in our city code or allow for backyard chickens. So I did include a lot of supporting information in the email, and I appreciate everyone who looked over that and, you know, let me know that they saw it, just because if someone isn't familiar with the concept of backyard chickens, it immediately might sound very strange. So the city of Geneva did consider this back in 2012 from... I just know that from reading a newspaper article, and the council vote was split at the time. It did not pass. Meanwhile, in Batavia and St. Charles, those two towns did pass ordinance. So as I mentioned in the email I sent to everyone, Batavia has had an ordinance for eight years, St. Charles has had their chicken ordinance for six years, and in speaking with the code enforcement officers for both of those towns, they said there were hardly any complaints whatsoever. And the St. Charles code enforcement officer I spoke with, whose name's Robert, said that in general, the commentary he gets is overwhelmingly positive in St. Charles. So I just threw that out there. And I just wanted to know if this is something that the council feels is, you know, worthy of discussing, putting on the agenda for an upcoming Cow meeting. So I guess I would just like to know what people think about that.
Traditionally speaking, ladies and gentlemen, we don't cast a vote per se on this. We just take a consensus from the council. Any commentary regarding this matter? Alderman Bruno, you had your hand up, sir.
Yeah, I'll jump in. Yeah, I'm always happy to discuss anything that anyone's interested in. That's why they have us there to vet these things. I've had a different experience in terms of the people reaching out to me in that I can't recall anyone approaching me on this issue maybe but once since the 2012 discussion. So given that, my only concern, while it wouldn't cost anything for Cow to discuss it, if there's not overwhelming desire by the general populace, I wouldn't want to consume much in the way of city resources. I'm not sure what... How involved that would get to draft such an ordinance. If it's just copy paste, maybe it's not a big deal, but I'm happy to discuss, but I don't have any pressure to do so by my constituency. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else on the topic? Hearing no other interest in comments? Alderman Caven? Yes, sir.
I guess I would just add, I have had a couple people inquire over the course of the last year. It's been a very small number, but, you know, I certainly don't have any problem discussing it if it were to be an item to talk about, but it hasn't been a large quantity. But I have had a couple of questions over the course of the last year, albeit a minimal amount. If this is something that we want to discuss in a future Cow meeting, I don't think there's any harm in discussing it, so.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Alderman Swanson?
Thank you, Mayor.
Then Alderman Ruby.
I would be fine discussing it as well. I've had one inquiry over the past few years as to discuss this. My only reservation would be to discuss it at this time during the pandemic. If we're limiting our work to essential business, would this be considered essential? And I'd be concerned with staff time as well. So that would be my one caveat, otherwise I'm open to discussing it. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Ruby?
Just voicing my support for a discussion on the topic to continue the discussion.
Anyone else? Alderman Miladra, then Alderman Casarog.
All right, thanks. I'll also voice my support. I was on the council when we discussed it last time. I think it would be interesting to revisit the issue, only this time with some experience from our neighbors to the north and south. I think that would be valuable input to the discussion. Thanks.
Thank you. Alderman Casarog?
I was going to say that I would be okay with discussing it, too. I was wondering if this is something that we could task with planning and zoning for them to take public input and maybe get kind of the pros and cons. Is that appropriate? Maybe Stephanie knows?
Well, it wouldn't be... Unless you're applying zoning restrictions on where the chickens would go, it wouldn't be a Planning and Zoning Commission item. It would be a City Council item. It's just an ordinance revision. So the question would be whether the council wants to just bring an ordinance revision to a future Cow or whether you want to schedule it for a full policy discussion on a night by itself.
And let me just add to what Stephanie said, too. If it's a... It's my opinion that if it's a future Committee of the Whole meeting or a future policy discussion on an independent evening of itself, we don't have many left before the end of the calendar year, particularly with respect to the Committee of the Whole agendas. Would there be... Would there be any reluctance? I sense a consensus from the council that there's interest in discussing the matter, particularly in the context of other communities having done so. Is there any reluctance to look at a date in January to do so in light of the short span of time and meetings we have before the end of the calendar year?
If I may, I think that would be completely acceptable, because with winter coming up anyway, I don't really feel that... Well, I could be wrong, but any resident wishing to get backyard chickens, if we did have this discussion at a Cow meeting and it was approved, I don't think they would maybe want to be out in the snowy weather setting up their little chicken coop. So I think it would be perfectly acceptable to wait until the beginning of 2021 to have this discussion.
Anyone else object to that direction? And we can go from there, and we'll review or relay the information to Mr. DeGroot and his team.
Are we looking for a policy discussion?
Yeah, we're looking... I'm assuming we're looking... Are we looking for a policy discussion or Committee of the Whole discussion? Is there a preference? I'm a... Mike, Alderman Miladra?
Well, I would prefer it be a policy discussion rather than a discussion on a specific ordinance. Like I said, I'm interested to learn the experiences, the communities that do allow this, bring to the table. So my leanings would be policy discussion.
Okay. Alderman Marks?
I agree with Alderman Miladra, a policy discussion, I think. You know, if I remember right, Mayor, a lot of the discussion went around coyotes at the time, especially in the far western area, so I think a policy discussion is a good idea.
Okay. Anyone object to the policy discussion path? Seeing none? Hearing none? I think Ms. Dawkins, you understood? Okay. Thank you. Any other new business?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other new business by any member of the council? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the City Council meeting, and we will roll directly into the Committee of the Whole meeting. So is there a motion?
So moved.
Alderman Bruno, I believe, made that motion?
Yes.
And roll call vote would be in order.
Kilburg, aye.
Casarog?
Casarog, aye.
Miladra?
Miladra, aye.
Marks?
Marks, aye.
McGowan?
McGowan, aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bruno?
Bruno, aye.
Ruby, aye.
Caven?
Caven, aye.
We are adjourned, ladies and gentlemen. Just give us 30 seconds, and we'll switch over to the Committee of the Whole. I will turn the mic components off for all of our benefits. Ladies and gentlemen, tonight's Committee of the Whole meeting is called to session. I believe we are live, is that right, Pete?
We are live, sir.
Again, the Committee of the Whole meeting has been called to session. Let the record show that all the Aldermen save four, Alderman Burkhardt, are present either remotely or live at the dais. As our City Council meeting proceeded earlier this evening, so too will the Committee of the Whole with respect to public engagement and commentary. Anyone tuning in and following the meeting along who wishes to speak under New Business can certainly do so. If they wish to actually verbalize their comments, they can send an email to publiccomments@genova-il.us with a phone number, and we will then contact them so they can speak from the phone here on the dais. If they simply want to submit written commentary, which will be part of the record but not read this evening, they can do so at the same email address, publiccomments@genova-il.us. And of course, both the request to speak and the submission of written comments has to be completed before the meeting is adjourned to be part of the official record. With that...
Point of order, Mayor?
Yes, sir.
The email address is singularpubliccomment@genova.
It will work either way.
Yeah, thank you. It'll actually work either way.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, thank goodness, yeah. Thank you, Mike, very much. It'll also work at yo@genova. Item 2, folks, approved Committee of the Whole minutes from November 2, 2020, and special Committee of the Whole minutes from November 6, 2020. Is there a motion?
So moved. Casarog?
Casarog makes the motion to approve, and there's... Casarog makes the motion to approve, and there's a second?
Bruno, second.
Alderman Bruno makes the second. Any questions or comments regarding those minutes submitted? If not, a roll call would be in order.
Casarog?
Casarog, aye.
Maladra?
Maladra, aye.
Marks?
Marks, aye.
McGowan?
McGowan, aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bruno?
Bruno, aye.
Ruby?
Ruby, aye.
Caven?
Caven, aye.
Kilburg?
Kilburg, aye.
Item two has been adopted with a vote of nine in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and one absent. Items of business, ladies and gentlemen. Item 3A is to consider draft resolution authorizing the execution of an operation and maintenance agreement with Caterpillar Power Generation LLC for the operations or operation of the Geneva Generation facility in 2021, 2022, and 2023. Is there a motion?
Bruno.
Bruno makes the motion. Thank you, sir. Is there a second? Seconded by Alderman Swanson. With that, we turn the floor over to Ms. Dawkins for a brief update on this matter before discussion from the council.
So, in support of the strategic plan objective to provide equipment, infrastructure, and facilities necessary to maintain efficient and reliable public services, the electric division staff is recommending using Caterpillar power generation systems for operations and maintenance of the GGF during the summer months of '21, '22, and '23 to continue to maximize the savings from behind-the-meter operations. The City of Geneva has utilized Caterpillar to operate and maintain the plant through the summer season since the GGF was completed in 2005. Through the use of Caterpillar, the city has realized significant savings for its electric utility customers. The plant performance for the 2019 season equated to 3.5 million in savings on capacity and transmission costs for the 2020 billing. We do have Superintendent Wright virtually to answer any additional questions the council may have.
Are there any questions or comments for either the superintendent, Mr. Wright, Alderman Bruno, or questions?
Yes, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
For Hal, I didn't go back through historical records, but, well, obviously, this is more than paying for itself. But is there, how do these numbers compare historically? Are these on a similar trajectory, or have we seen increases or decreases in the maintenance price, maintenance costs for these engines?
The maintenance on the plant on an annual basis has to run around $800,000 a year, and that's pretty consistent year over year. The savings vary year to year based on capacity price, which is the majority of the savings that we have, and that is follows a three-year auction at PJM. So, those prices do go up and down early auction. Been very consistent over the last few years in the $2.5 to $3.5 million range.
Yeah, but just the, this particular contract is this in line with historical?
Oh, yes. We're averaging a little less than 2% per year increase.
Great. Thank you.
As they do these contracts.
Thanks.
Anyone else from the committee? Questions or comments for Mr. Wright? Mr. Wright is, or Superintendent Wright, is that a G on your shirt? I can't see that far. It's like, nice, nicely done. No other comments or questions? We'll be happy to take a roll call. Ms. Dawkins, whenever you're ready.
Maladra?
Maladra, aye.
Marks?
Marks, aye.
McGowan?
McGowan, aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bruno?
Bruno, aye.
Ruby?
Ruby, aye.
Caven?
Caven, aye.
Kilburg?
Kilburg, aye.
Casarog?
Casarog, aye.
With a vote of nine in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and one absent, item 3A is adopted. Item 3B, consider draft resolution authorizing waiver of bidding process and purchase agreement for, I believe it's Itron Centron meters for Anextor as quote for poly-phase meters and single-phase meters throughout fiscal year '21 and '22, not to exceed budgeted amount per year for each year. Is there a motion?
Mark.
So moved.
Alderman Marks makes the motion. Alderman McGowan makes the second? I think so. Ms. Dawkins?
So, similar to the previous agenda item, the item for consideration supports the strategic plan objective of providing equipment, infrastructure, and facilities necessary to maintain efficient and reliable public services. City staff has obtained quotes and purchased radio read poly-phase meters on an as-needed basis for several years as the city converts to a fixed network radio read system. Individual meter quotes were obtained from Anextor as a single-source supplier for the blanket purchasing of future Itron ERT meters for citywide meter changeouts for fiscal year '21 and '22, not to exceed the budgeted amount per year for each year. Again, Superintendent Wright is with us if you have any additional questions.
Questions or comments for the superintendent, Mr. Wright? Alderman Bruno?
Thank you, Mayor, and thanks, Hal. So, we are, where are we in the process of swapping out all the old meters? This is part of that project, am I correct?
That's correct. We have about 10,000 meters, round numbers, and we're less than 2,000 left to go. We do about 900 a year.
Oh, good. Thank you.
Anyone else? Alderman Caven, did you have your hand up, sir? Nope. Seeing none, sensing none, hearing none? Roll call vote, please. Ms. Dawkins?
Marks?
Marks, aye.
McGowan?
McGowan, aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bruno?
Bruno, aye.
Ruby?
Ruby, aye.
Caven?
Caven, aye.
Kilburg?
Kilburg, aye.
Casarog?
Casarog, aye.
Maladra?
Maladra, aye.
Item 3B is adopted with a vote of nine in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and one absent. Item 3C, ladies and gentlemen, is to recommend draft resolution authorizing execution of an easement agreement for electric utility at 516 Peck Road. Is there a motion?
So moved, Marks.
Motion by Alderman Swanson, seconded by, I believe that was Marks?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Dawkins?
Okay, so again, we're supporting strategic plan objective of providing equipment, infrastructure, and facilities necessary to maintain efficient and reliable public services. The property owner at 516 Peck Road is willing to dedicate a utility easement to allow for service for the adjacent lot. Approval of this resolution would provide for execution of said easement. And we still have Superintendent Wright hanging out there in outer space or virtual space willing to answer any questions you might have.
It is my suspicion that Superintendent Wright and Gabe Caven are in the same room? They have the same background. Any questions for the superintendent?
Without masks, without masks.
Any questions for Mr. Wright? Hearing none, seeing none, sensing none? Roll call vote, Ms. Dawkins?
Okay. McGowan?
McGowan, aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bruno?
Bruno, aye.
Ruby?
Ruby, aye.
Caven?
Caven, aye.
Kilburg?
Kilburg, aye.
Casarog?
Casarog, aye.
Maladra?
Maladra, aye.
Marks?
Marks, aye.
Item 3C has been adopted with a vote of nine in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and one absent. We move on to item 3D, which is to consider draft resolution relating to commuter parking fees and permits. Is there a motion to consider this resolution?
So moved, Marks.
Alderman Marks makes that motion?
Casarog, second.
Seconded by Alderman Casarog. And with that, Ms. Dawkins?
Okay. So, through previous actions, the city council has suspended daily commuter and permit parking fees through December 31, 2020, as a result of reduced commuter parking due to COVID-19. The proposed resolution will further suspend parking fees at designated commuter parking lots, including the parking deck and the commuter permit parking lot, until our region enters phase five of Governor Pritzker's Restore Illinois Plan or at an earlier date as deemed appropriate by the city administrator. I would mention the reason we're asking for this is if, for some reason, we noticed an uptick in commuter parking and that things are kind of getting back to normal, we would then make the recommendation, but we need notice because the permit parking, we do have to mail out and notify people. We have continued to reach out to the UP seeking assistance and relief from the monthly lease payments. The most recent update is, is that they have forwarded to the real estate office, and somebody would be getting back to me shortly. So, with that, I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
Questions or comments from Ms. Dawkins regarding the commuter fees and permit program, parking fees and permit program, excuse me? Seeing none? Alderman Casarog?
Hi, thanks, Mayor Burns. I was just wondering what the UP has been doing up until now. Have we been paying reduced fees or no fees for that lot?
No, we still pay our monthly rental lot to the UP. It's for the one lot, not for the deck, but for the one permit parking lot. So, we've been paying that all year long, but we've waived fees for our parkers since the end of March.
And so now we're looking for relief on the other lot as well?
No, I'm looking for relief for the only lot that we pay rental to the UP for.
Okay.
Since we are not getting any revenue, then presumably we should not have to be paying the lease because it's based on revenue collections.
Agreed. Thank you.
Anyone else? Hearing none, seeing none, and sensing none? Ms. Dawkins, roll call vote, please.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bruno?
Bruno, aye.
Ruby?
Ruby, aye.
Caven?
Caven, aye.
Kilburg?
Kilburg, aye.
Casarog?
Casarog, aye.
Maladra?
Maladra, aye.
Marks?
Marks, aye.
McGowan?
McGowan, aye.
Item 3D, ladies and gentlemen, has been adopted with a vote of nine in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and one absent. Our last item of business is, prior to new business, that is, is item 4E, as in Edward, update on the recycling efforts in downtown Geneva. This is strictly an update. No formal action to be taken. With that, I'd like to ask our city administrator, is there anything you'd like to add prior to perhaps? I believe Mr. Babica is gonna be...
Mr. Babica is here, and, no, I'm just gonna turn it over to him.
Okay.
In just a moment... Can everybody hear me?
Sure can. Thank you, Rich.
Fantastic. So, we were able to secure a mock-up recycling tote or cart from Lake Shore, and unfortunately, with the changes, you're not able to see that physically. So, I have emailed out pictures.
There is one, Rich, if I may, the...
That's it.
The camera's on. Yep.
Perfect. So, the cart you see before you is a modified typical residential recycling cart. And what the staff at Lake Shore Recycling did, as our model is gloriously showing there, is they cut a center hole in, which has been typical for recycling carts, but they also inserted a very thick rubber gasket material that's been bisected into pie shapes. And what that is, is it makes it fairly resistant to non-cans or bottles. Again, as you remember from strategic planning, that the tip, the most common contaminant found within the recycling and the downtowns has been organic material. So, it's not just cardboard, but it's the pizza slices, the sorbet cups, the ice cream cups, the coffee cups, and that is what contaminates that, the recycling content. So, with these flaps, it's going to reduce the likelihood, or we're hoping it'll reduce the likelihood of that material getting inside the cart. I have made contact with my counterparts in St. Charles, Batavia, and Wheaton. We also reached out to the Park District, but there's site superintendent Jared Culp has been on vacation. He just came back in the office today, and we haven't been able to cross paths. What I can tell you is that those communities have seen a significant contamination of recycling material from primarily organic material within their carts. So, what we're proposing to do still, as mentioned at strategic planning, is to put 10 of these carts out, actually five from Lake Shore, and then some of our own field staff are looking at modifying the kind of classic recycling cans that you would typically see that match up to architectural versions that have the metal lid on top. We're gonna try to replicate that heavy rubber gasket inside there. And what our intent is, is sometime this spring, pending approval through the budget process, would be to purchase five of the architectural similar recycling cans with lids, modify them with those gaskets, and then put two of those, each one of the Lake Shore carts and then one of our modified recycling cans, at each of the five corners up and down the South Third Street. So, there'd be two at James, two at Campbell, two at Franklin, two at Fulton, and two at South. And then run it for 90 to 60 days, or 90 to 120 days, basically after the Fourth of July weekend, and kind of take a running data. That is something else that we found, as we've been researching this with the other communities as well as Lake Shore, is that there really hasn't been any data taken as to what the contaminant is. It's really just the feeling of the staff and of the operators as they're emptying their carts. So, we'll try to do some real honest data collection, see what the average is for contamination, and basically be able to present a recommendation to the city council going into the fiscal '23 budget of whether or not we're gonna expand this program or not, and give you some real information and let you make your decisions.
Comments or questions, Alderman Casarog, Alderman Bruno?
Do those cans that you have there, Rich, do those lock closed or anything, or somebody can just pick up the lid if they want to push it through the gasket?
There is a spring clamp on those lids. The one that we have in City Hall does not. These are basically custom-made at Lake Shore Recycling. They're not commercially available. And they were not able to get a finished product out to us, but they were at least able to get the modified gaskets for, to be seen.
Okay. Thank you.
Alderman Bruno, I believe, and then Alderman McGowan?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. And, Rich, I don't know if Lake Shore has given you feedback, but hopefully this will keep that particular stream isolated to bottles and cans, easily recyclable items with a cart. Has Lake Shore suggested, what, can people recycle a half-filled soda bottle, let's say?
Well, even with the curbside recycling program, the request is to have as much organic material removed from the recycling container. So, in that case, if it was a soda bottle, it would be to empty the soda bottle out before you put it into the cart. If it was in your own house, sour cream container, you know, try to rinse out as much of the material before you put it in the cart.
Well, I'm looking forward to the experiment, and hopefully we can segregate some of our waste stream into some productive use. Thanks.
I believe Alderman McGowan?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Burns. Rich, thank you for bringing in the demo, and I look forward to seeing these recycling bins in our downtown. And I think that the Park District has had their recycling bins for maybe five years or so. I was chatting a little bit with Ken Kerfoot from the Park District about this today. So, it was a bit of trial and error for the Park District when they first rolled out their recycling bins. But now, if you go to, for example, Wheeler Park, you see, and it's a public place, obviously, but Geneva residents are used to seeing a recycling bin alongside the trash, whatever respectable. So, obviously, this isn't gonna be a new concept to people when they're out and about in public, but it will be a really great statement that the city is making that, you know, we support recycling. We're hoping that this is something that the community will embrace as well and be compliant with what can and cannot be put in the recycling bin. So, and then just to make it... So, and then just to make it blatantly obvious, though, that the blue bin is going to be for recycled materials only, is it going to say something in like big letters on the lid that this is empty bottles and cans only, or recyclable items only? I couldn't really tell from the video, but it already says it on there.
The cart currently has relatively small lettering for a cart its size. I think it's about maybe a one-inch font. So I think that is something that we would have to work to expand. One of the, the more common applications that I've seen has been that they are mounted next to a freestanding pole, which allows for a sign to be posted near the cart, trying to get as much public cooperation as possible. But that is definitely something that we'll be working on and tweaking as we go through the next several months.
Okay, that sounds great. And I'm sorry I missed this, but what, what date did you say that these recycling containers will be placed in this, like outside? What, what date?
Well, pending, the decorative cans are about $1,000 apiece, which means we'll need budget authority through the upcoming budget process to purchase five cans. We'll need the time over the winter to modify them and play around with the gaskets to find one that works. These types of carts and the gaskets that we're proposing to place on the lids are not commercially readily available. So there's going to be a lot of homegrown engineering that's going to go into this to find one that seems to work. The crews are actually looking forward to the challenge. They've, they've been, they have a pretty good track record going with our Brian system, so they're looking for a new, new venues to, for their artistic creativity.
Okay, so that's, that's awesome, and thank you to you and your staff for all of the work you're doing towards this new endeavor for the city. So are you, are you suggesting then that this will be something that we start in the spring?
Yeah, that doesn't seem to make sense, especially with the restrictions that are in place and the imminent cold weather that is invariably going to come. We would project seeing putting these cans out, again with budget authority, it would be after a May 1st application, and then 90 days would take us up through the 4th of July. Give us some good solid data. And if we can get them out earlier, we might be able to get the carts out from Lake Shore earlier because Lake Shore is providing them. So you might see them out a little bit earlier, but it doesn't seem to make much sense to put the carts out in the middle of February and March, especially when the foot traffic isn't as aggressive as it is during the holidays or the summer months.
Okay, well, thank you. I think it's, this is a great step in the right direction. Thank you.
Alderman Ruby?
Thank you, I just wanted to add a couple comments courtesy of Jennifer Jarland, the Kane County Recycling Coordinator. I've been in touch with her, and she has a lot of knowledge and background on this, and she was actually planning to chime in tonight until all the technical snafus. But anyway, she, she's recommending a couple key things. The lid, the lid has to lock. If it, if the, if you can open up a lid, we're definitely going to get pizza boxes and all sorts of trash in there. And, you know, we, we can't even recycle cups. Alderman Bruno, you asked about, you know, half a soda? No, that cannot go in there. And a cup cannot even go in there. It's, it's got to be bottles and cans only. So this is going to be a lot of community education to, to make this project a success. But Rich, I love the, the gasket in the lid, that, that's a great idea. It's a great start. And as far as wording, you know, Jennifer just very simply requested, you know, big capital letters, recycle empty bottles and cans only. Just stick to those two objects and nothing else. So here, because I have my little tutoring thing here. So this is just a quick, I wrote this up really fast, so that would be the message on the can, recycle empty bottles and cans only. And then in a little smaller font, no cups, no liquids, no trash. So, you know, just try to make it as straightforward and simple and obvious as possible. I think that just these simple things will all increase the success of our pilot program. So I'm hopeful. Thank you, thanks so much. I appreciate the time and effort that has gone into this, and really excited about the, the prospect in the project. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Alderman Kossarog, before I recognize you a second time, anyone else who has not yet spoken a first time wish to speak? Alderman Kossarog?
Thanks Mayor Burns. I was just a little confused, and I apologize if I'm the only one, on the plastic cans from, cans from Lake Shore versus the decorative cans. Are we, was the plastic can, are they both going to be out there? I, I guess I just got a little confused on that.
Yes, the, the preference would be to have five of each cans out there to see what's more effective and what's more aesthetically pleasing. The cans that match our existing, like garbage cans downtown, whether or not they're painted black or blue, they still go for $1,000 apiece. And prior to making a capital investment of upwards of $50,000 to buy 50 cans for the downtown and the State Street corridor, I think it's really important to see what the data collection is, whether or not that decision is, is supported or needed. We may find out that the carts have a better contamination or lack of contamination rate than the decorative cans with the locking lids. So right now, these are, it seemed to be our two primary options. There are other recycling containers that are available on the market, such as the, the recycled cart, the recycled square cans. But we want to, let me, let's be honest with you, the carts that are out on Third Street right now stand out like a sore thumb. You know, it kind of looks like Swedish days all day, all day, all weekend with all the extra carts out there. So we obviously want to return back to our roots and go some, with something that's mimicking the architectural flavors of the corridor. But we also don't want to go out and spend $50,000 on cans to find out that they're, they're not as efficient or effective with the return. So we want to be able to collect some good solid data, get that back to the City Council so, so Lieutenant of you and the Mayor, you make an informed decision and give us some clear, clear directions as to which way to go forward.
Okay, great, thank you. I just wanted to thank you Director Babica, and also Mel Rooney, and Stephanie O'Hara, and the other people from, Jay Womack from Natural Resources Committee for keeping us on track on this, and just encourage them to be kept in the loop and be involved in the process, since it's something they are obviously very passionate about. Thank you.
Anyone else? Again, no action necessary this evening, strictly an update. Very well. We're at item number four, ladies and gentlemen, which is new business and public comment. I've checked with Administrator Dawkins, there are no emails requesting information to be presented for the record, nor any requests to contact anyone for a verbal commentary. Anyone from the council, any new business for our benefit this evening? Alderman Kilberg?
I guess, how many of you Alderman were contacted by members of the Chamber of Commerce as it relates to restaurants and their need for assistance over the last three hours? Anyone? I guess, I guess, I think it's pretty important that we, we get some thought to see to what extent the city might be of some assistance as it relates to these businesses. Those are, we're getting, I'm getting a bunch of feedback, is anyone else? I think, yeah.
If you're not speaking, we encourage you to mute, otherwise that could be their source all yours.
I know mine says not, but I have my own mute button here, I apologize.
Yeah, I received a listing of a number of programs in other cities within the suburbs or within Northern Illinois are engaged in as it relates to their businesses. And rather than take a lot of time, I can forward that to staff, I guess. My question of the council is, how many of you are inclined to try to do something as it relates to our businesses?
I like.
Do I just ask a little answer? Sorry.
So I think, I think that you have to ask the question a little bit differently. Are we inclined to do something? Yes, but I think the question is, what, what can be done?
Okay, well, God, I listen. Go ahead. LIL is PPP, PPE reimbursement program for supplies already purchased or supplies to be purchased.
Right, LIL is a whole business.
Months of food beverage tax rebated to restaurants after Governor lifts stay-at-home order. They're looking at about over $300,000 that they're going to rebate to businesses.
So, Dixon, Dixon, Illinois partnering with the Chamber of Commerce Main Street Program and Lee County Industrial Development Association. Payment for qualified expenses not covered by Paycheck Protection Program, may be renewed after one month if necessary. You know, that's a $5,000 program. Homer Glenn, zero interest line of business credit funding of $150,000. And Lamont, funding for organization projects and PPE. You know, these are the types of things that other communities are looking at, and, you know, I think we ought to give some consideration too if, if we're still inclined.
Great, that, thank you. So your question was, are we inclined to do something? And my answer was, we need to figure out what we can do. And that remains, no matter what Lamont is doing, or Homer Glenn is doing, or whatever anybody else is doing, all I care about is what we can do. And by that, I mean, what are we allowed to do as a non-home rule community? And also, wait, 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 wait.
I'm not thinking that we should do anything that would be inappropriate or illegal.
And what can we do that doesn't put us in a predicament? I think that if we look at our finances today, they may be one thing, but if the restaurants are hurting today, we know that we're going to feel that wave in a couple of months. And so we need to be careful. I was just reacting to this, the question of, do we want to do something? I think that there's a difference between want to do and can do, and we have to find out what can do means. Thanks.
I would agree with, with Craig. I don't think there's anyone here that would not want to do something in this, in this situation. We just have to figure out what's, what can we put on the table?
I guess what I'm asking for is, should we have the staff explore some, some of the, some of the things that our communities are attempting to do that would be, you know, within, within the resources that we might have available to, you know, I think it's, it's goodwill, and I think it's important that we, we explore, explore this area at this point in time, because I don't think the next three or four months are going to be very pleasant.
Alderman Caven? Your hand up, sir? Alderman Caven?
Yeah. No, I definitely agree with what is being said. I mean, I realize that we need to first figure out what we potentially could do, but if this is new business, I think that this is at least something that's worth exploring or putting this as a, as an agenda item for us to discuss. I realize that we can only do what we can do in the city itself, if a lot of these businesses wind up hurting the same way for another three or four months, obviously that's going to be a whole pocketbook as well. But I don't think that that should preclude us from at least having the discussion to maybe answer, you know, something that you're looking for, Meladra, or these things that we actually could consider, whether or not we're able to, or whether we should. I think that it's definitely worth putting it as an, as an agenda item onto something for us to physically discuss. That's my opinion.
Alderman Ruby?
Thank you. I agree with the importance of, of discussion. I also just wanted to note, I, I don't recall, was it 30% of the restaurants are part of the chamber? Does anyone know that offhand? My, my point being, it's not just the members of the chamber that are, that are hurting. So I would like the conversation to be all encompassing and not strictly focus on the Chamber of Commerce members. I know that complicates things, and it's already very complicated, but I just wanted to throw that out there to be included in the conversation.
Thank you. Alderman McGowan and Swanson?
Thank you. Yes, I, okay, I don't mind having the discussion. We've been known as a restaurant town. Before the pandemic, it was very common for people to say, like, Geneva's a dining destination. We're, we're a destination for so many reasons, but dining is one of the, I feel like one of the top destinations, and we've seen so many excellent restaurants, you know, make Geneva their home, or second home, or third home, whatever. So I do care about the restaurants. I would like to explore the possible ways that we might be able to offer some assistance. However, I don't want to ignore the fact that there are a lot of other segments of our city that may be in dire need of support as well. So this could include salons, this could include other, just other businesses that could also really use some help. And, and just individual families who can't afford to purchase groceries right now, let alone order food for carryout or something like that. So I would like to have that included in the conversation. And finally, gosh, sorry, this is sort of like, it's like a big topic, so I feel like it definitely should be discussed. I have another thought that I, I will remember, I will get back to, thank you.
Alderman Swanson?
Thank you Mayor. I, I'm open to having the discussion as well. I think it should include, though, other resources. It was my understanding that Kane County has undistributed funds, and that they had a very low participation rate, and they have a time limit to give out that funding. So if we partner with these other groups, perhaps there are other sources that it won't have to be all coming from the city. So I would like that to be part of the conversation. What else is out there, and how much is there, and what, what do they need to do to participate in that additional funding and help? So, thank you.
Thank you, well said. Before I recognize Alderman McGowan for a second time, Alderman Marks, sir?
Yeah, you know, I agree, I think it's a good discussion to have. I think we really have to see what we can do. And again, you know, it's, I, I would agree with Becky, it has to look at the whole town, even out there on, on Randall Road. It just can't be the, the downtown area, those restaurants are hurting out there too. So it, it sounds like it's going to become a, a pretty big policy discussion, but I think it's one we should have.
Alderman McGowan?
Okay, thanks. So my other thoughts were- Okay, thanks. So my other thoughts were as much as I, it would be great to give, you know, the restaurants some financial aid. What amount will really make a difference in would, you know, $1,000, $5,000, $10,000, $20,000? Will that even help? Or will, you know, we have to consider the possibility that we would be spending down money that is saved in our general fund and it may not even make a difference. It'll just be a little short-term thing. Meanwhile, despite what's, you know, the positive news about, you know, different pharmaceutical companies getting closer to rolling out a vaccine, we don't know when that will be. We don't know when a vaccine will become widely available. We don't know how much worse this will get before it gets better. We just don't know. So the city needs to have funds available so that we can kind of continue paying for like the regular, just regular operating items. So I feel like before we jump into like taking any excess money that we have and being very generous and giving it to the restaurants, we need to make sure that we're not acting too quickly because nobody can predict the future. So also, I just want to mention to Alderman Swanson's comment about the Kane County having surplus funds that weren't really claimed by small businesses. I read that the county was considering finding out if they can allocate those funds to fire departments who had requested a certain dollar amount and weren't given the full 100% of what they had requested. I don't know if anyone else has information about that as well, but that's what I heard. And I feel that the fire departments should receive that money to cover their extra COVID costs before, I feel like that takes precedence over supporting the restaurants. But it's a difficult, it's a difficult thing to talk about. And I hate to upset any restaurant owners. I can only imagine how hard it is for anyone in the hospitality industry right now. So I don't have all the answers, obviously, but I definitely want to learn more and have more discussion about this. Thank you.
Alderman Kocerog, your hand is up, sir?
Your other mute button needs to unmute.
There we go. Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
I definitely think that we should have a discussion about what we can do. I agree with Gene that there's a lot of other industries though in our city that you know, are affected by this. We're not just a restaurant destination. We're a shopping destination. We're a destination to live. And I would also be curious, just in terms of this list that Alderman Kilburg referenced, sort of comparing what we have done, because it's not that we haven't done anything so far. I don't I don't want to sound like we can't or shouldn't do anything more because of that, but I think we do need to take into account what we already have done in terms of wavering liquor fees, giving up parking spaces, tent fees, things like that. So you know, I think it's a very complicated discussion, but you know, definitely we could give it a shot. Thank you.
Alderman Kilburg. Yes, sir.
Yeah, you know, I don't think we need the policy discussion tonight. All I'm saying is I think we need to get it on the agenda and give staff an opportunity to to explore what other communities are doing and then also to give the businesses in Geneva, when I said restaurants, maybe I should have been more inclusive. All I'm saying is that one of the restaurant owners has reached out to me and brought my attention and then forwarded some information that he had. So no, I'm not saying that restaurants are the only business in Geneva that need to be supported. Let's take a look and see what we might be able to do without putting ourselves in jeopardy. And that's all I'm saying here. I don't want you to read anything more into it than that. And, you know, I think that this is a pretty important policy discussion and I think it's one that we should prioritize.
We will indeed look at the other communities and what they are doing and research that. Absolutely. Any other new business by anyone? I do have one bit of news related to this discussion. Thursday afternoon at 3 o'clock, the Kane County Cares Allocation Committee is meeting. On that agenda is discussion of a round two small business grant program to help expend post haste the $4 million they are sitting on that they want out the door ASAP. All of you know, who have been tuning into those meetings, the chairman of that committee is Mr. John Hoshite from St. Charles. It has been alerted to everyone listening into those meetings that sometimes the biggest challenge is A, those folks who might need assistance or are seeking support being made aware of that opportunity, number one. Number two, those who have filed a request for support for whatever reason could not produce the materials necessary to be eligible for. So I know all that's going to be discussed this afternoon or Thursday afternoon at 3 o'clock. So but by all means, tune in because as you know, they're all open meetings and they're fascinating to say the least. So any other new business? Alderman Kocerog?
Sorry, I meant to bring this up earlier, but I just wanted to congratulate our firemen, our policemen and our educators on the Wood Award that was announced earlier this week or last week. Much deserved to all those groups of people for all the hard work that they've done during this pandemic. And I don't want that to go without being noticed.
Thank you. If there's no other new business, ladies and gentlemen, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
No.
Oh, I'm sorry. There's a closed session. So here's the rules, folks. We are going to use this link for closed session. So you don't need to go anywhere or do anything. We are however, going to ask Mr. Collins to ensure that those who should not be on the closed session discussion are indeed not. And then we will alert you when we begin the closed session discussion. So but we do need a motion to go into closed session. I'd like to entertain one when you have a moment.
Mark. Marks moves to go into closed session.
Alderman Marks makes the motion to go into closed session for the purpose of collective negotiating matters between the public body and its employees or their representatives. Is there a second? Second by Alderman Swanson. And a roll call vote to go into closed session is needed. So Ms. Dawkins, please take the roll.
Bruno?
Bruno, aye.
Ruby?
Ruby, aye.
Caven?
Caven, aye.
Kilburg?
Kilburg, aye.
Kocerog?
Kocerog, aye.
Meladra?
Meladra, aye.
Marks?
Marks, aye.
McGowan?
McGowan, aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Give us about two minutes.
Give us about two minutes, folks. There will be no action following.
Will there be any, will there be any business, will there be anything coming out of that meeting?
No action taken tonight, just an update regarding some matters we thought you might find interesting.
I just wanted to make sure the public knew that.
Yeah.
That's all.
I'm going to turn my microphone off. Now a motion to
This is returned to open session. I don't know what the other one.
Returned to open session formally. Is there a motion?
So moved, Marks.
Alderman Marks makes the motion and seconded by
Second.
Alderman Bruno?
Whoever. Bruno, yes.
Caven?
Caven, aye.
Kilburg?
Kilburg, aye.
Kocerog?
Kocerog, aye.
Meladra?
Meladra, aye.
Marks?
Marks, aye.
McGowan?
McGowan, aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bruno?
Swanson or Bruno, aye.
Ruby?
Whoever.
Ruby, aye.
We are back in open session, ladies and gentlemen. If there's nothing else for the benefit of ourselves and the community we serve, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Bruno, so moved.
Bruno makes the motion to adjourn. Roll call vote, please.
Kilburg?
Kilburg, aye.
Kocerog?
Kocerog, aye.
Meladra?
Meladra, aye.
Marks?
Marks, aye.
McGowan?
McGowan, aye.
Swanson, Bruno?
Aye.
Bruno?
Bruno, aye.
Ruby?
Ruby, aye.
Caven?
Caven, aye.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Enjoy the rest of your evening. Be safe.